Business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. We have on the agenda several action items tonight. The first action item will be dealing with the mask mandate issue. Then the other action items are dealing with the budget. So I just want to convey to folks, we're happy to see folks here. If you do wish to speak during public comment, we ask that you start by stating your name and your address. And then you have a set time to speak to us. I will be timing the speakers and we'll give you a warning when it's close to your time to wrap up. For people who aren't used to speaking during public comment, we just want to let you know that we can't answer questions and we cannot engage with you. All we can do is listen to what you have to say to us during your allotted time. I know that sometimes people think they can come up and start talking back and forth with board members, and that's just not the way it goes. So, thank you very much. And Holly, would you let us know who has signed up?
... in educating our children. Don't let these trends continue. Protect our children from the social and mental health crisis unfolding in front of us as a result of this pandemic. Let's practice what we model. Adults and families can eat in restaurants unmasked, attend concerts unmasked, sporting events unmasked, yet our children, our future, are imprisoned behind these masks. I ask you to consider unmasking our children tonight. Masks on our athletes, masks while singing, mask while praying instruments, masks while learning are not normal and should not be considered the new normal. Normal is seeing facial expressions, sharing in laughter, enjoying social interactions, seeing instruction from teachers as it is delivered. We must respect individual choice. You do for everything else in our schools, for race, for sexuality, for gender, for ethnicity, but not for medical and religious freedoms. Wyndham Public Schools continues to discriminate against the personal beliefs of others when it comes to their health and religious choices. You invest a great deal of time and energy and resources to protect the rights of others based on skin color, gender identity, ethnicity, sexual partner preference. Yet here I stand, watching the rights of my children and others like us isolated because they are different from the mainstream. Different doesn't mean wrong. It simply means different than you. Two years is long enough. Stop discriminating against those who have different religious and health choices. The time is now. Make masks a choice regardless of a person's medical decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was perfectly three minutes. So the next speaker is Jose Yanas.
Hello, my name is Jose Yanas. I live in 134 Corey Street, right across the street. I just want to say thank you for that. I did not prepare anything such like, anything like that, but wow. I'm just here for my kids. They're also in the barrel. And we have seen across the whole nation how things are starting to loosen up little by little. And I know that you guys are taking that into consideration also. And would like it if here itself, itself, it becomes more of a choice than forced because of one or two beliefs and how everything else is going. But my stand is, I grew up in New York City, in the Bronx, in the system and stuff like that. And I've been working my way up little by little on being able to be what freedom is in this country. I've experienced that from living off the system, from being in the streets and stuff, to now owning my own business, my wife owning her own business here in town. And as part of the community, we just want choice, freedom of choice for all, not just for those. Like she mentioned in her speech, there are, you're given freedom to folks with gender identities and stuff, but those who are proclaiming freedom of religious and choice and stuff were being pushed around and we're being back, you know, into a corner and stuff. And we're just asking for everyone to look at the other half and let us be free also, as long as we all striving to be together. Thank you. I don't much, like, this is my first time speaking up here, so I'm kind of nervous, so forgive me. But thank you for the opportunity, for allowing us to come back and actually see each other and actually speak together in such public stuff that we need to do as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And you didn't seem nervous, you did a good job. Thank you. The next person signed up here I have on the list is Krista. Krista. Come on up and you can, you can lower the mic down closer to your mouth, Krista. There you go.
I'm not going to say my address because my mom's also going to speak, so she's gonna say her address.
Do you want to just say your last name, Krista, please?
Hello, my name is Krista Kettle.
Thank you.
I'd like to share my opinion about masks. The CDC has made the decision to drop masks, the mask mandate. And a mandate is not a lot, merely a suggestion. Since governmental officials no longer suggest we wear masks, we should now be in unison with the CDC guidelines. Allowing choice, by allowing choice. Some of my friends who weren't able to attend also wanted the ability to have a choice to wear a mask or not, and wanted to come today because they are similar minded. The mask is supposed to be temporary, but it has been over two years. What is the definition of temporary, you may ask? The definition of temporary is a short amount of time, not permanent. Many governmental associations have lied to us. One of the Scotland, Connecticut selectmen had to get a newspaper from a small town in Canada. That is the only one reporting the lies the government, Pfizer, and Moderna have fed us. If the mask policy stays for this district, I will follow the CDC guidelines and I will not be wearing a mask tomorrow at school. I am not going to let a group of people play me as a puppet, so I am going to follow myself, my heart, for my well-being, my own well-being. The United States is supposed to be the land of the free and home of the brave, but I do not feel free and the only people who are brave are the ones standing up for our rights. Masks are harmful because of the physical and emotional scars it leaves. The physical is the scars behind my ears that the masks leave from the earpieces rubbing on the back of my ears. And the emotional that it leaves, the emotional scars is how I feel alone and I cannot see the emotions of my friends. This makes, and this feeling makes me not able, it makes me sad not being able to help or understand my friends' feelings and when they need my help.
Krista?
I hope you can consider this when making the decision that affects others. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. The next person we have on the list is Ivan.
Same thing, my mom's gonna do it. Okay.
Ivan, Ivan, what's your last name, please?
Hi, my name is Ivan Kettle.
Thank you.
And I, I think that people should have a choice of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask because some are scared, but it's like the flu. Do you remember the flu? In the past, more people died from the flu than COVID-19 did. The reports on COVID-19, and they so concerned with the reports on COVID-19 that they haven't reported on the flu. Please vote mask optional. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. And this must be your mother, Christina?
Good evening, my name is Christina Kettle. My address is 1203 Plainfield Pike in Onico, Connecticut. My three children attend the STEM Academy. First, I'd like to comment on the last meeting. I was extremely disappointed in the way it was run and how the moderator handled the situations. She blatantly overlooked people who didn't have the same thinking as her. And as a community member, I was extremely offended by that. Second, I'd like to speak about masks. From the moment of conception, I had the ability to make choices for my children. What they would eat, clothes they would wear, school they attend, extracurricular activities, and the list goes on. It is my parental right to make choices that affect my children. No one has the right to make medical decisions for me or my family, especially not elected board officials who are supposed to be working for our children and community members. I urge you to put your personal feelings aside and vote based on facts, not fear. The superintendent you the board hired made recommendations based upon research and information gathering, as well as collaborating with other superintendents and local health departments. You should support her qualified, educated opinion. As a matter of fact, you should support mask optional for tomorrow. The community members deserve to make the best choice for their family. It is time to stop being fearful and allow the children their God-given right to mask or unmask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Michelle Barber.
Good evening, Dr. Youngberg and the members of the Board of Education. My name is Michelle Barber. My address is 243 Swarrooke Road in Musup, Connecticut.
It's okay, Michelle. It's okay, you can slow down. It's fine. We're here to listen.
I come before you tonight as an educator, who has been in the trenches these past two years. However, more importantly, I come before you tonight as a mother of four, with three children currently attending Barrows. According to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, a board of education governs a school district and serves as a leader and a champion for public education in the community. It goes on to say that the role of a school board is to ensure that student, that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the communities. Unfortunately, I was quite disheartened after attending your last virtual Board of Ed meeting. It was abundantly clear that several of the members of this board were not responsive to the values and beliefs of the very people who elected them. It is important, it is impossible to be a leader or a champion for education without partnering with parents. Choosing to vote on an issue as controversial as masks without first listening to how parents feel is irresponsible. I was taken aback to hear that members of the board expressed that parent input would have little, if any, impact on their vote. If this is the case, I'm quite confused about your role as elected officials. Considering last school year and this, today marks 293 days that our children have been masked in school. 293 days they have not had the right to breathe freely. 293 days that they have not had the opportunity to see their teacher's smiling faces. 293 days that they have not had the chance to see their peers' faces. A few nights ago, we were dining out as a family. A few tables over, we saw a family with children wearing the same school uniforms as ours. We struck up a conversation with the family and were shocked to find out that one of the little girls is in my daughter's kindergarten class, 110 days into the school year, and my daughter did not recognize her peer without a mask. This is heartbreaking. As a teacher, I can assure you that masks are hurting our children. Science has already proven that they are not protecting people as we had once hoped. Instead, they are preventing our children from hearing their teachers clearly. They are hindering their ability to learn letter sounds and other foundational skills. However, more importantly, they are preventing our children from learning to read and respond to important facial cues. Students are becoming withdrawn, fearful, and depressed. In addition, across the grades, there are several students who do not wear their masks correctly. My children do wear their masks properly and are frustrated that their teachers must frequently stop instruction and remind their peers to do the same. Let's stop requiring our teachers to police these mask mandates and instead allow them to focus on the job they were hired to do, educate our children. My district recently lifted the mask mandate. After only three days, I see an increase in my students' engagement, social interactions, and overall moods. I see a difference in the staff as well.
Michelle, I need you to wrap up.
We have a renewed sense of energy and purpose. We finally see the end of the light of this, the end of, the light at the end of this long and scary emotional tunnel. I know at the last meeting there was fear for bullying of students who may choose to continue to wear masks. I do have some students who do this, and it has given us the opportunity to talk about the fact that masks are a family choice and how we respect each family's choice. What a great learning opportunity. The field of education has changed immensely since I first started teaching 20 years ago.
Michelle, would you please wrap up?
I have one more. However, the only thing that will never change is the importance of partnering with families to help students to be successful in school. Now's your chance to do the right thing. It's time for you to show families that you are responsive to their values, beliefs, and priorities. It's time for you to show that you believe in each family's right to make medical decisions for their children. Some families may choose to continue to wear a mask. However, it is time to end the mandate and allow all families to do just that, choose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have two more people signed up to speak. Raquel Luna?
Do I get frequent flyer miles? Good evening. My name is Raquel Luna and I live at 619 Jackson Street. I have two daughters that go to North Wyndham School and a daughter that goes to Barrows also, whole Barrows crew. As a parent, I'm very excited to see the mask requirement lifted and to see school return to normal. However, I feel that the board should look at other practices being done in the schools to ensure that a plan is in place so things are able to run smoothly as we go through this transition. For example, students should be able to eat in the cafeterias together and not in classrooms. Events district-wide should all be shifted to in-person. After-school activities should be able to resume, for example, talent shows, conferences, and other school-community events. And if the board deems it necessary, masks should be required for those large gatherings. I don't think simply lifting the requirement is enough to ensure equity in all schools and make sure students are getting the same rich experiences. We need to make sure that standards and expectations are established and followed at each school during the shift. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I have Ellie Garvey.
Hello, Ellie Garvey, 520 Pleasant Street. I'm up here tonight to the, oh, let me try it again. I'm up here tonight to ask that you support freedom of choice. Let the parents choose what you feel is right for their children. I know that you will make the right choice in the end. My faith is in you guys, and thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you very much. Now, before, before we close public comment, is there anybody who didn't sign up on the sign-in sheet who was thinking they would get a chance to speak this evening? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hands or indicating that they'd like to speak. I want to thank the speakers for sharing their thoughts with us. And emotional as it was. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move into the next item on the agenda, which is discussion regarding the mask mandate and updated CDC masking guidance. And I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent to make sure that everybody on the board understands the changes that happened on Friday late in the day. And what's happened since then. Thank you.
So first of all, I want to make sure, I want to thank everyone for speaking and letting us know where you stand on the issue. It is a difficult decision for the board to make because they are representing the entire community. And we know from just listening to the news and looking at our own survey that the community is very much split on the issue. So there's going to be people who are unhappy no matter what's decided. So the board has a lot to do. It's a challenging decision to make. Since the CDC guidance came out on Friday, I have had multiple discussions and meetings, phone calls with local and state health officials, with the town leadership, with local, regional superintendents, trying to flush out what the new guidance says and trying to understand our original decision to wait the two weeks, should we continue to do that. I spoke at length, about 30 minutes, with our local health district director, Patrice Sulik, who, as I shared with the board, does support waiting till March 15th. And we had a whole discussion about that. She does think that there's the possibility for an uptick in COVID cases, in influenza, in neurovirus, and strep throat, once the masks come off. So she did share that with me. She also shared that she understands the difficulties that superintendents are in, the difficulty, the difficult position that we're in, and that she supports the decision that I will ultimately recommend and that the board will choose, but she wanted me to know as a public health official where she stood on the issue. So I know, having talked to all the local and state officials based on the new CDC guidance and our, on our current COVID data and on all my correspondence, I am recommending that the board consider lifting the mask mandate effective tomorrow, and I just want to talk through that for a minute. So that would mean that we would lift the mandate K to 12 in our classrooms and offices across the district, as well as on the school buses. It does not apply to our early Head Start and Head Start classrooms. We verified this morning that there is still a federal mandate in place for those students and the teachers that interact with those students. It appears that that federal mandate may eventually be lifted, but it has not been lifted yet, so we're obligated to follow it. I also want to let people know that if the board decides to take my recommendation and lift the mask mandate, that we do have a lot of work still to do. And Ms. Luna sort of touched on some of the things that we have to consider. I think if you think about this like a science experiment, lifting the masks is one variable. So we don't want to change a lot of variables at once, just in case this does continue to be a public health issue. So I would say that we need to take it slow. And we have a COVID team in place. We've had a COVID team in place now for two years. We literally meet every single day at 3:15 and sometimes on many weekends. So that team will help us make those decisions and move forward in a safe manner. I want to make sure that everyone knows that although I'm recommending the mask mandate be ended effective tomorrow, I do want to respect, I do want to make sure the district respects the choice of those families that continue to wear their masks. And I have asked all of our teachers to have those conversations in their classrooms. And I will recommend or suggest to families that they have those same exact conversations at the kitchen table, make sure that, you know, that you're aware that there are reasons why people will continue to wear masks and there's no reason for anyone to be made fun of as a result of that. It's a, it's a family choice. So that is my recommendation. I don't know if there's any specific questions board members have for me.
We'll open it up to questions for Dr. Youngberg. And then, of course, I would entertain a motion based on her recommendation or another motion. Mark?
Dr. Youngberg, how we, if we make this motion tonight, how will we make the announcement to the school community?
That's a great question. I imagine we were going to be jumping on Thrill Share and pushing out information in text and phone calls and all that good stuff because it is something that people would want to know, you know, as soon as we're possibly able to make that announcement.
Are there any other questions? Katina?
Dr. Youngberg, thank you for everything you and your team have done. Will there then be?
Katina, I think you need to pull your mic a little bit closer.
Sorry, I apologize. I said thank you for all you have done. And my question is, then what would be the steps to mitigate all those other aspects? And what will continue in place, like the cleaning and the air filters and?
So we wouldn't really be changing anything other than the masks at first. So there's still cohorting that goes on, there's still social distancing that goes on. We're still very much aware of, you know, when it's a large gathering, a large space. Some of our schools have, are in various places based on their physical structures. So I can't say that this is a blanket statement because it does look different in each of our buildings, but I know that we'll have to, you know, walk through this carefully. We've been doing that all along, so I'm comfortable knowing that we can do it. I want to make sure everyone feels safe and comfortable, so we're going to navigate as best we can. But again, my recommendation would be not to change anything else but the masks and play it out.
Elde?
Good evening. Like everyone has said, thank you for making these tough decisions for us. Can you hear me? Is that close enough? Dr. Youngberg, you get a lot. Anyways, I get nervous too sometimes and I start babbling, so excuse me if I babble a little bit. When I came here tonight, I was in favor of holding off for two more weeks. But after listening to the public, I realized that I read in that book that we've been reading about speaking for the public, because that's what I'm, I'm an elected official and I was elected by you, so I have to speak for you. And so with that being said, now I do respect freedom of choice and I do think masks should be optional. And facts, not fear, we do have a lot of facts and we can always go back to masks if we have to, which we have in the past. I guess we have to just, just do it. Just take the mask off and hope for the best and I'm going to keep mine on just because I have, I have facts, but I also have fear, you know, but that's my, that's my. That's me. But I have to speak for you, not for me, not my personal opinion, what you would want me to do, so. You're welcome.
Could you please refrain from talking from the audience? Thank you. Katina, I'm going to pass over you for a second. I want to see if anybody who hasn't spoken would like to speak first and then I'll come back to you, okay? Cody?
Oh, Paula, then you'll be after Cody. Okay. The board received a lot of correspondence from parents, especially after Friday. I read all of the emails and letters that we received. I know the rest of the board did too. Responded to many of you, and it's really great to see a lot of you guys here tonight participating in public comment. I think it's really important, so thanks for coming out. Just a week ago, this board voted overwhelmingly in support of extending the mask mandate in our schools, passed the requirement from the state. And then just two days later, the CDC revised its mask guidelines. In the time it took to issue a press release, the state of Connecticut found itself no longer in a red zone, but a green zone. First, it was two weeks to slow the spread in order not overwhelm hospitals. When it seemed hospitals were no longer overrun, we switched to using positive case rate to justify extending executive powers that were enjoyed far longer than they were ever intended to last. Universal masking was deemed necessary until the vaccine was readily available. When the vaccine was readily available, many states had the sense to drop masking. By then, it was clear that COVID was sharply seasonal, paid no respect to the various facial decorations we chose to adorn ourselves with. But not Connecticut. We continued making everybody wear masks for another year because we were following the science. So why did the CDC suddenly switch back to relying primarily on hospitalization rates instead of just positive case rates? Can somebody answer that? Can anybody answer that? Can you explain why we ever used anything else? Wasn't that the reason we, wasn't the whole reason for two weeks to slow the spread? The timing of this is completely arbitrary, and I think that the board has, as embarrassingly found itself, you know, to use the idiom with its pants down. Well, it's completely arbitrary unless you consider its proximity to an important address given just last night by our commander in chief. If masks don't work, unless everybody wears them perfectly all the time, then they were never going to work. We need to start leading by example and taking responsibility for our own individual safety, and that's what we need to be teaching our kids too. My son Cyrus has to come tonight. He's the eldest of our four children. I have three boys, he's 10. Go ahead and stand up, Cy. You're going to have to speak up because I'm going to- going to have to speak up, because I'm going to ask you a question. So my boys are big.
Cody, you're not allowed to go back and forth with the audience.
I'm not going back and forth with the audience.
Well, Cody, okay, you can ask your son one question. Fine. And then I'd ask you to also refrain, Cody, from, from making suggestions about the full board and what we're feeling. Speak for yourself. Use I statements, please. Thank you.
So Cyrus, when we wrestle, there's one rule. What's, what's the first rule? Say it louder. That's right. We need to be teaching our kids to take responsibility for their own safety, not expecting everybody else to keep them safe by keeping masks on. If this board chooses to end this mask mandate effective tomorrow, it should do so only by first apologizing to our parents and their children for the harm that we know it's caused and resolve to never put it in place again, regardless of how the CDC is feeling on any given day. Also, like, I mean, we can go into the motion time, but if we're going to make a decision about when to do this, why not now, so that everyone can just enjoy the air for a little bit? The other thing I have to say is, with respect to the early childhood program, those are the youngest among us. Like, there's, from what I understand, it's, it's five-year-old and under. We're going to, we're expecting them to continue wearing masks while, while everyone else gets to enjoy not wearing them. I say, I say, you can tell the federal government to pound sand. If we're going to make the other kids remove their masks, then everybody should be able to remove them. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, Paula's next. And then Katina.
Go ahead, Paula. There are many things I could say, but I think to get into a debate this evening is probably not appropriate. I will only say that having worked in healthcare for over 40 years, having worked in a nursing home, where I saw many of our residents pass away as a result of COVID, where I saw all of us wearing masks and PEE to keep ourselves safe, and we did. Many of our residents, again, were able to get better and, and live on, and our staff remained safe. Masks are definitely a helpful item. Otherwise, doctors wouldn't use them in the operating room. They are effective. They do their job. But they have to be worn properly. That's all I will say about masks. I appreciate the input. I understand that this is not normal, and that we do at one point have to get rid of them. I think, I can't speak for the board, but I know one of my reasons for extending it to the middle of March was only to be sure that, number one, the word got out appropriately, and that we were able to put into place any procedures that might have been needed in order to keep our students and our staff safe. I do understand that we have gotten to a point where COVID is not as strong, as deadly as it was for nearly two years. Thank God for that. And I think that if we treat ourselves and our people around us with care, using the same care that we would use during the influenza season, because if you realize, there's been very little, if none, influenza in the past two years. I think this is why. If we remember to do all those healthy things, keeping tissues, washing hands, making sure that we eat and sleep properly, then I think we are going in the right direction. I do appreciate the professionalism and the knowledge of our superintendent. I respect that, and I will respect her decision. I just hope people understand that as a board, our position is not only to represent you, but to make sure that we maintain an educational community and environment that is the safest for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I also just want to remind folks that the next item is an action item, and we can entertain a motion at any time. Katina?
I was elected by the town of Wyndham and Willie Bantek to be in this board and to represent all our children. And you all know how passionate I am about the safety of children in our community. As a school social worker for 26 years, and as a mental health clinician for 42, with licenses of all kinds, I will say that I am into protecting our children. I hear the voices of parents. I hear the voices of diverse communities. And I do respect all of the above. I'm a Christian. My first obligation is to be kind and serve you, the other, and to be responsible for your safety and mine. As a COVID survivor and living with people who have 90-some years old in my household, as well as being a parent and a grandparent, the safety, your safety, is more important than my own choice and decision. Nevertheless, we, as a respected group of adults, elected officials, have considered all parts, and feel very proud of this board and the administration, as well as our teachers and children. I am also going to say that so far, we have followed science and the guidance of the CDC and health officials. Therefore, I am not embarrassed about having made a decision at the moment we did with the resources and information we had based on science. And now, there are other information and resources also based on science by the CDC. Therefore, I am willing and happy to make the motion that we follow the guidance of Dr. Youngberg and the CDC, the science, because as a Christian person and as a board member representing this community, I have the obligation to protect our children. I move that we suspend and make optional the mask mandate as of tomorrow, as the CDC has said, with the exception of early childhood, as the federal government is still mandating. Thank you.
Motion's been made by Katina. Is there somebody who would like to second it?
I beat you to it.
Okay, Brendan? Brendan? Seconded by Brendan. Is there any more discussion that people would like to have? Cody?
I mean, I already mentioned it, but is there any, there's no scientific reason to choose tomorrow over today. Can we choose today, just so that everyone could take a break and remove their masks?
I'm listening to what Dr. Youngberg suggested. I will just say, from my point of view, Cody, I hear what you're saying. There are obviously people like you who have chosen not to wear their masks tonight, and we didn't ask you to leave. So I think that people are going to do what they're going to do. There are people in the audience who are not wearing masks, too. I would just think, let's just vote tonight. The recommendation is for tomorrow, so that we can allow the superintendent and her staff to spend time late into this evening, after this meeting, to get the word out to the community.
Okay. That is actually the reason why I chose tomorrow, because we have to notify the families of the decision that the board makes. And, and we were talking about the mask mandate in schools and on our buses, which don't happen again until tomorrow, so.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the motion that's on the floor? Okay. Well, you're not, you're in the audience. You can't speak. I'm sorry. You can only speak during public comment. There will be public comment at the end of the meeting, if you would like to speak then. Okay? Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion that is on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? I think it was unanimous. Correct? Yeah, okay. A motion carries. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to, now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a report from me. I meant to give this report at last week's meeting, but I was sick and unable to be here. This has to do with the issue of, the discussion that the board is having, having made no decision, of elementary school consolidation. There have been meetings of an ad hoc committee that was appointed, and, I mean, that was created by the board to discuss this matter. At my request, the superintendent and her staff came up with a straw proposal for us to consider and discuss, rather than talk about the, the subject sort of in an amorphous way. There has been reports, and editorial even, in the Chronicle about this issue. It is an issue that is being discussed. And it is, and it is an issue, I want to make clear, that the board has not yet decided how it would like to move forward on. So I just want to say for the public record today that we are going to have a meeting during this month dedicated, a Board of Ed meeting dedicated, to considering how and if we might move forward on this. You all may recall that late last year, after the December meeting of the ad hoc committee on this subject, I proposed to the board a timeline that would allow us to make a decision, one way or, or another, in a considered way, with community and stakeholder input. So what I am proposing, and I just want to make it really clear to everybody, is that we have a special, I mean, that we have a meeting, whether it's one of our regular meetings or a special meeting during the month of March, to dig into this as a board and have a discussion on the matter. The proposal that I have put on the table would ask us to decide whether or not we want to move forward with a straw proposal of some sort, whether it's what Dr. Youngberg and her staff put forward, or some slight variation on that, or some different variation on that. But we need to make a decision as a board about whether or not we want to take something out on the road for several months and get input from various stakeholders in the community. That is one of the things I heard loud and clear at the December meeting of the ad hoc committee, when Dr. Youngberg gave her presentation, that they would like to hear what other people have to say about this idea. My thought is, is that after hearing several months' worth of input, the board then can come back together in June and have another discussion to unpack what we heard from the community and different stakeholders, and make a decision about whether or not we want to make any refinement to the straw dog proposal that was put out there, or do something completely different. And then if we decide we want to move forward with a more refined proposal, based on the input that we got from the community and stakeholders, we could go back out on the road for a couple more months, and come back in the early fall, and make a decision about whether or not we might like to move forward on this. That is what I am proposing. I wanted to put that out there clearly for the community, and I see Michelle is here, and Michelle's been writing about this. So I just want to make sure that people know that this is not a done deal by far, but it is something that I, as the board chair, feel very strongly, we have to have a discussion about at least, and make some decisions as a board together about how and if we want to move forward. And that's all I want to say on that topic for tonight. But I felt compelled to put some sort of information out there about how the board might proceed, and what has been proposed, in case there are people in the community who don't understand that. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to transition to budget workshop number two. For people who are new to board meetings, we are required by town charter to present a Board of Ed budget for next school year to the Board of Finance by mid-March, March 15th, to be exact. And this is the second workshop. We could vote tonight to take action, to approve a budget, to send along to the Board of Finance. That is why there is an action item on the agenda, if we decide to do that. If we decide not to do it tonight, we'd really have to decide to do it next week when we meet, because we have to meet the deadline to send it off to the Board of Finance. So I'm going to turn it back over to the superintendent, who gave a presentation on this at the last meeting. And the board all has their budget books, and then we can open it up for discussion. But I don't know how you might want to center this evening's discussion.
So I'm sure there's people in the audience who might not have tuned in to the budget presentation that was given, was it two weeks ago, last week?
Last week.
It's a big, it's a blur for me right now. But I, we did present a proposal, the superintendent's recommended budget, which would essentially be a 6.79% increase, but not, but we're able to cover that entire increase. So we're essentially moving forward with a 0% for the taxpayers. We have a number of reasons why we're projecting a surplus this year, why we have additional funds available to cover that 6.79% increase. And those are all spelled out specifically in the budget book that I believe is available online. And that there are some copies of the presentation in the room, if anybody needs a copy. Holly, do you know where the extra copies are? They're up there. Okay. So if anybody wants a copy of the presentation, I'm specifically talking about page five of that presentation, which goes through where we came up with the 6.79% increase, and then the dollar values, dollar amounts, where we're going to cover that amount in order to ask for a 0% moving forward. I do want to point out that COVID is essentially the reason why we have a surplus, why we're able to carry over additional money, why we are able to use the new state statute that allows us to put a 2%, a 2% of the budget forward each year. That's a new statute that came out as a result of COVID. So we know that COVID's not going to be here forever, as well as the federal funds that have come to support the district. So at some point, we're going to be having a very different conversation about what the district needs in terms of finances. But right now, I feel comfortable moving forward by saying we're going to ask for a 0% increase, knowing that we can cover what is actually a 6.79% increase to give our schools what they need in terms of staffing, instructional materials, equipment, furniture, all the things that you need to effectively run a school. So I don't know if the board has any specific questions for me?
Elda, go ahead.
My question is on page 105, under other purchased services?
Elda, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Close to your mouth.
My question is on page 105, other purchased services, Wyndham High School and district-wide maintenance. What are those for?
I'm going to defer to Queen of Finance, Rita Parsiac.
Somebody's going to have to hand you a microphone. Maybe Cody could hand you his. He's closest.
We have the extra one.
You have an extra one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll grab it. Okay.
It's on its way.
And I know how many budget lines there are, Rita. So if you can't answer tonight, don't feel pressured. We will get them the answer. There are thousands of budget lines, so.
Elda, could you please repeat your question? I couldn't hear you.
My question is about page 105 in the budget book, under 09. My question is about page 105 in the budget book, under 09, Other Purchased Services on the bottom, Wyndham High School and District Wide Maintenance.
I think we have a description of Other Purchased Services earlier in the book. The big buckets, correct?
Yes.
Just trying to find out what page it's on. It's on page 90.
Yeah.
And it's at the top. It says, "Other purchased services are contracted services such as facilities contracts, software licenses, and the utilization of substitute services." At the top of page 90, Ilda, it explains what that is.
See, sometimes I don't, the questions and the answers are like right in front of me, but I ask.
That's okay. The reason why the high school's listed twice is the second one is for security. It's for the security officer that we contract with the town?
Oh, SRO.
SRO.
School Resource Officer.
Yes. Anything else, Ilda? Is that it? Okay, go ahead. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to ask a question of Dr. Youngberg? Cody?
Sorry if I already asked this. Last time we spoke about the budget, but I believe you mentioned that the, you know, the virtual increase does not affect the MBR, which means like next year, when we go to propose next year's budget, the townsfolk aren't going to be surprised to see like this 6% added in there in addition, or?
You raise a really good point, and it's one that I brought up at the last board meeting, that obviously our expenses increase, like everybody's expenses increase over time. One of the biggest pieces or changes this year was the increase in the teachers' contract, and actually increases in contracts across the board, but the teachers, we are working really hard to get them a competitive salary. So you're absolutely right that the 6.79% increase more than likely will be something similar to what we're looking for next year. And I can't say exactly what we'll be able to cover and how, you know, all the things that we have going will continue forward. Our goal is to try our best to have this transparent and open communication with the town, because what I keep saying is that we're looking for a sustainable solution to give kids what they need. So we don't want to have these ups and downs. We want there to be a slow and steady move forward, and we want, we want to be able to say to the town, when we ask you for an increase, it's because we absolutely need it, and if we don't need it, we're not going to spend it. Like, that's the way we've been functioning. So, but thank you for bringing that point. This 0% increase does not raise the MBR. We're covering a 6.79% increase on our end, and it doesn't change the budget amount. So that is a really good point for everyone to remember. Thank you.
If I, can I just?
You have another question?
Well, it's sort of in response to that. So theoretically, we could be sort of enjoying the 6.9% increase this year in our budget. Next year, it could actually go down to like 1%?
I don't know.
That's historically the way it has gone.
Right, that's right.
Yeah. And if you, if you look at over time, we really don't get a whole lot of, a very large increase. It's sort of a slow and steady, 1% here, 1.3% there. It's very slow and steady, yeah.
I understand that your concern is just having a consistent budget, but I just think it's important for the town to know what to expect for next year.
Sure. One of the things I know that will continue to be in place is that state statute. I don't think they're going to undo that. So that means we always will have the ability, with the town's blessing, of course, to put 2% aside if we're able to do that and still take care of all of our bills. So that could reduce whatever we're looking for by that 2% of the budget.
I also want to mention to the two new board members on the board who, this is your first budget season, this is what we recommend to the Board of Finance. Then the Board of Finance can take this any year that we send it and propose changes. They can raise, they can propose to the taxpayers more money for us, or they, but they can never go below the minimum budget requirement. And they can't propose changes in our line items. They can only propose bottom line changes. So hypothetically, if we go to the Board of Finance, they could say, we want to give you, and they have done this in the past. When I was on the Board of Finance, we did that, you know, we're going to give you X amount of dollars more, but they can't tell you how to spend it. They try to sometimes, but they can't. And they could say X amount of dollars less, and they can't tell us where to cut it. That would be up to us. But right now, what Dr. Youngberg is proposing, and if we adopt a budget tonight, it becomes our budget then. And the cover on this budget will be changed to the Board of Ed budget from being the superintendent's budget before it goes to the Board of Finance for discussion. Katina?
I was going to suggest, to benefit all of us, especially our two new board members. Dr. Youngberg, last year, you had a little like historical kind of table where it showed how we have not received basically any improvement, and if it's there, it's sitting in our packet again this year?
It's actually not in your packet this year.
Exactly. So that's my suggestion, that that little piece of information is shared with all of us again, to refresh our memory how our town budget historically has neglected the school system. Thank you.
I was actually going to pose a similar question just to the board members in general. Is there anything specific that you would like me to put into the Board of Finance presentation that you think isn't, hasn't been addressed or needs to be addressed? So I hear you.
Got it, Katina. Are there any more questions? Go ahead, Ilda.
So I remember my question. Even though I put a sticky note on it, I couldn't find it. So on number 14, miscellaneous dues and fees, on page 109, I did figure out, I went to page 91, but it's, it's not very clear. It says, "The adjustment in this line item is utilized for miscellaneous dues and affiliations." I'm not clear on that.
So those could be memberships that our staff members are a part of, professional memberships. I'm trying to think of an example, like I'm a part of the, of the CAPS unit, so I have to pay dues to be a part of the CAPS unit. So it could be something like that.
Right. Professional affiliations is the major part of that line item, like cave, you know, that we are a part of.
Their membership, so.
Oceanography, yeah, the high school, I could name a few. And for some, for some positions, it's my understanding that there are requirements to be a part of certain associations. It's not just like a fluff thing, right?
Right.
You know, because.
Right. And sometimes the membership dues actually allow you access to things that would cost us a lot more money if we didn't have the membership dues, so.
Are there any more questions? Okay, I would entertain, well, next item is, well, first of all, I wasn't here last week. I want to just thank Dr. Youngberg and the staff for putting together an understandable budget. This is something that Dr. Youngberg took on when she came on as the superintendent in the middle of a great deal of turmoil, and really has gotten to the point where you actually can understand the budget book. And that's something that you've done over the past couple of years, and you and your team, and I just want to commend you all for that, because it's no small feat for those of us who've been on the board longer.
Thank you. I just have to celebrate the, everyone in that row, most especially when it comes to the budget, though, the cabinet, Neil Weathers, Rita Parsiac, Stephanie Garrett, and all of the leadership team, because they really do spend a great deal of time. It is my feeling that if the community can understand how the budget works, we're going to have a lot, it's going to be a lot easier for us to get what the kids need. So that's the goal. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now on to action items, the second set of action items. And the first item is approval of budget transfers. And Mark, would you like to make a motion here?
Sure. Let me just quickly mention that prior to this meeting, the Finance Audit did meet, and we have approved 541,987,000 worth of transfers. So that, including the two transfers that we approved at our February 16th meeting, means tonight we're recommending the board approve $1,683,884 worth of transfers for the, for the budget. That's the total. And that's, the schematics are in the board package, so you have the details.
We also got the handout before the meeting. So I would, you made the motion. Could I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Katina. Now we can open up for discussion. Is there any discussion that anybody would like to have? Okay. As Mark said, the Finance and Audit Committee have reviewed the transfers and made the recommendation to this board for action. Then I'll just ask everybody who's in favor of the motion on the floor to please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Motion carried. Thank you. Next action item is acceptance of the superintendent's proposed budget, and I would entertain a motion on that. Brendan beat you to it.
He always beats me to it. I second it.
Seconded by Ilda. Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Ilda. Is there any further comment on the budget? I will just comment that it's very unusual to be in the position to go to the Board of Finance asking for this, and it's, it's a little scary, I will say, as the board chair. And I would just say that when I go with Dr. Youngberg and anybody else who wants to go to the Board of Finance, I'm going to suggest to them that we're coming with this in good faith, and if the money from the state that is in this assumption that we can carry this without asking for an increase from them doesn't come through, that we do plan to come back to them and ask for money from the undesignated fund balance, because we cannot sustain a million-dollar gap in our budget. Personally, as the board chair, I feel that that's the only responsible thing to do if we're going to go forward like this.
I was going to say that we were going to make it clear in the presentation that they are assumptions right now. None of that, all of those funds, we believe them to be true, but we don't have proof. So yes, I agree.
So any other discussion?
If you and Dr. Youngberg could be so kind to also present to the new board members at the Finance, right, board, their new elected officials, that historical piece of what the town has done, it would be highly appreciated. Thank you.
We will do that. There's a lot of transition, new, new seats, new people on the Board of Finance. Anything else in discussion? Okay. All those in favor of sending this budget as proposed by the superintendent, adopting it as ours, and sending it off to the Board of Finance, please indicate so by raising your hands. Unanimous. There we go. So now we're on to the last item on the agenda tonight, which is public comment. And if you would like to speak during public comment, just raise your hand, and I'll ask you to come up to the podium here. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Is that Raquel I see back there? Yeah. Okay. Uh, who?
Sorry. The only thing I wanted to add, it was regarding the masks.
Can you just say your name?
Sure, Raquel Luna.
Thank you.
For the preschool, while I also agree, like some of people were saying that the younger kids, of course, shouldn't be wearing a mask, is that it affects federal funding. I feel like that was something that wasn't discussed, and for people at home that are listening, I think that's important for people to understand. But I also understand, because my, my five-year-old, she'll sit at the dinner table, and I'm like, why are you still wearing your mask? So, yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to add that for people at home that maybe didn't know. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Krista, right? Krista, just say your name one more time. Okay.
My name is Krista Kettle, and I'm really excited that you guys decided to drop it for tomorrow. I'm really excited to see Pierce's faces that I have not seen in over two years, and half of them are some, some kids are new, so I don't even know what they look like. I'm really excited to see what my friends' reactions would be, and I'm really happy to be finally walking into school without wearing a mask. Thank you.
It's nice to see your smile. And did you want to speak? Come on up here to the mic. You can walk around this way. Yeah, come on, right around. It's fine. Don't worry. If you wouldn't mind just making sure you give us your name and address when you speak?
Sure. Street address?
Yes, please.
Okay. Laura Lambert, and 195 Roanoke Avenue.
Thank you.
In Willamette. I'm a retired early childhood teacher, and currently am a educational consultant for a couple of preschool programs. It is my understanding, the preschool programs that I am a consultant for, as of Monday, no longer have a mask mandate through the state of Connecticut for early childhood. So I'm concerned about the head start, but I did hear the previous speaker say about the funding for the government. Is that where the two differences lie?
I'm afraid we can't answer you during public comment, but if you want to stay behind afterward, we can explain that difference to you.
Okay.
That situation. Thank you.
That's what I was curious about, was that part. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, come on up. I forgot you were back there, Tyler.
That's, that's the best way. Good evening. My name is Tyler Griffin, 349A North Street in Willamette, Chairman of the Board of Finance. I'd like to say I look forward to having the budget presented to the Board of Finance, and I look forward to continually working with you folks, providing a budget out to referendum in May, hopefully, fingers crossed everything goes well. And thank you for making decisions tonight. I know some are easier than others, and I appreciate all your effort, and I, again, look forward to working with you over the next couple of, several weeks or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay. Oh, come on up. This is Ivan, correct?
Yes.
Want to say your name one more time in the mic, and then tell us what you want to say to us.
Hi, my name is Ivan Kettle. I'm really happy that you get done with the thing. I'm, I'm going to love seeing my teacher's face walking into the door, seeing all my friends on masks, and my new Pierce. So thank you.
Anybody else? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
At 8:11. Thank you, everybody. And...